Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, I move to adopt today's session agenda, June 9th, 2009.
Any objections? So ordered. Senator Augen, if you please lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. If I can ask our colleagues to please rise. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to come together this afternoon. We thank you most especially for the nature of the deliberation that will be taking place over the course of the next several hours or several minutes. It's a result of some extensive effort by members of this body to be able to address some outstanding obligations, and we thank you for this opportunity. We also ask you to continue to bless and guide each and every member here in this legislative session hall, and just as importantly, each and every staff member that contributes to the operations of this legislative body. We ask you for your continual blessing always. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Senator Palacios, if you could please lead us in the interphrasing. Senator Tydegui, would you please lead us in songs? The Guam hymn first.
(singing) (singing)
Thank you, Senator Tydegui. If I could have the clerk call the roll.
Senator Ada. Senator Augen.
(speaking Spanish).
Senator Blas. Acting Speaker Cruz.
Present.
Senator Espaldan.
Senator Guthertz.
Present.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Palacios.
(speaking Spanish).
Senator Panglinen.
(speaking Spanish).
Senator Rector.
Here.
Senator Rispecho.
Senator Tydegui.
Here.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampe.
Majority Leader Guthertz.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask that senators that are participating in the APIO meeting this Tuesday's session, that Speaker Wampe, Senator Tenorio, Senator Barnes, Senator Tom Ada. Senator Rispecho. I believe Senator Espaldan. They make up the Guam delegation to the APIO meeting upon a pay.
Senator Calvo.
Mr. Speaker, in addition, again, I've gotten wind from Senator Tenorio due to a medical condition. He is unable to make the session today, so I'm also asking to include his name and solicit for excuse for this today's session.
Any objections to excusing the absence of our six colleagues? No objections, so ordered. Majority Leader Guthertz, do you have another motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there is a message from Imagalahin, Guam, calling the legislature into special session, and I move to append his communication to our journal.
(speaking Spanish). Madam, Mr. Speaker, I request that the clerk read the message from the governor. All right, thank you.
No objection.
If the clerk would please read the governor's message.
Letter dated June 9, 2009, to the Honorable Benjamin J.F. Cruz, Speaker 30th Guam Legislature, 155 Hessler Place, Hagonia, Guam, 96910. Reference Amendment Relative to the Issuance of GL Bonds. Hafa Day, Speaker Cruz. In preparing for the closing of the recently issued GL Bonds, Bond Council has identified a technical glitch that would require an amendment clarifying the authorized final maturity date of the bonds. The bonds were sold with a final maturity date of November 15, 2039. That is, a term of just under 30 years and five months. But the statute contains the following language: "The bonds shall mature not later than the date 30 years after their date of issuance." Due to the specificity of the reference to the date, Bond Council has stated that it would not be possible to conclude that we can round down to conclude that the term of the bonds meets a 30-year limitation. The underwriters have indicated that the sale of the bonds might very well unravel if we were to attempt to change the final maturity date, with all of the consequential changes. With that in mind, I am transmitting herewith an amendment to provide that the final maturity may not be later than November 15, 2039, or alternatively, to provide that the final maturity date may not be later than the date 30 years and five months after their date of issuance. Under the applicable SEC regulations, Bond Council must distribute the final official statements no later than seven business days after the sale of the bonds. It is imperative that this amendment be adopted as soon as possible, or no later than Friday, June 12, 2009 Guam time. Therefore, public interest requires that a special session be convened to act on the attached legislation. Imagalahin, Guam, Governor of Guam, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Organic Act of Guam as amended and the laws of Guam, calls special session of the legislature on Tuesday, June 9, 2009 at 4:00 p.m. Since settled in Magahit, Felix P. Camacho, Imagalahin, Guam, Governor of Guam.
Did everybody receive a copy of that letter and the attached proposed legislation? Is there any objection to the motion to append this to today's journal? There, I hear no objection, so ordered. Madam Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, as to reports of standing committees, there are none. As to reports of select committees, Mr. Speaker, there are no reports of select committees. As to introduction of first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 1, 3-S be given its first reading.
Any objection? None, so ordered. Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As to motions, Mr. Speaker, I move to excuse the senators that I noted earlier from today's session.
That's already been ordered. We can move on.
All right, thank you. And with respect to the bill, Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 1, 3-S on the second reading file for today.
Any objection? I'm sorry, I didn't find out before I started who was going to lead the discussion on this. Senator Augen, is this going to be yours? Please. If you would.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to move to skip Items XIV Legislative Concurrents and Item XV Consent Calendar and proceed to the second reading file.
Thank you, we're on the second reading file.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 1, 3-S on the third reading file with discussion and further move to resolve, just for discussion. Thank you.
Senator Augen, do you wish to lead the discussion? I know you were the one that sent out the letter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I take it that it's already been moved that Bill Number 1, 3-S be moved to and be placed on the third reading, or would that motion be appropriate now?
It's been moved. No objection.
On that motion, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to initiate discussions on this particular matter, which came to my attention late this morning in reference to the nature of the amendment that we have before us. And I'd like to just bring to the attention of the members, immediately after receiving some of the documents, I thought it was necessary that, in fact, copies of the proposed legislation as well as the letter from Bond Council be incorporated or be transmitted to each of the senators because in anticipation of a possible call of session, and that's exactly what has transpired here. We're here to discuss this. I had transmitted it, I believe, about 1:00 p.m. this afternoon to all of the senators, and I hope that all of you have copies. If not, I do have extra copies here, Mr. Speaker, that can be disseminated accordingly. Well, the letter highlighted the most of the content of the chief executive when, as he forwarded the proposed legislation to us. But there's a particular letter that I had included in the dissemination of information, and it was from Mr. Sanders, who's the legal counsel, on the, obviously, the bond, and it highlights again and reemphasizes the need to be able to adjust this particular timeframe. As I understand it, Mr. Speaker, the law reads presently that it has to be amended, I apologize, it's on the wrong page. The law at this moment reads that the bond shall mature not later than the date 30 years after the date of issuance, and obviously, the date of issuance was last week, first week, I believe it was the 3rd of June. That being the case, the way the bond was brought to market stipulated the final maturity date of November 15, 2039, and that was what was presented to the bond investors, and that was the nature of the understanding when, in fact, it went to market. How this transpired, they said it was an oversight, and the representatives from GIDEA had alluded that it was an oversight on the part of the underwriters, and it should have been caught at that point in time. But that being the case, yes, it will cost the people of Guam for that short timeframe, the additional timeframe between June and November, so I don't want to mislead anyone that this is not going to cost the people of Guam. Whatever the outstanding balance is of the final payment of the bond, the general obligation bond, whether it be $20 million, $20.5 million annually, well, that being the case, then between the dates of June and November, 15 to 2039, the interest rate applied would be the additional costs associated with this legislation that is before us. But because they had initially gone out to market with that representation that the maturity, final maturity date would be November 15, 2039, and that's one of the reasons why this legislation is being brought before us. There's a particular statement that is included in the Bond Council's letter, and it reads, "The underwriters," and I believe the chief executive had also highlighted it, but it stipulates, "The underwriters have concluded that the sale of the bonds might very well unravel if we were to attempt to change the final maturity date, with all of the consequential changes." And I think that just by virtue of the potential impact that that might have by going back to the bond underwriters and by going back to the bond investors, I think it would be a prudent move to be able to move and address this. I think also, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to highlight the effort of the Guam Economic Development Authority and the chief executive's team in terms of going out to market and simultaneously selling the two bonds, whether you want to refer to it as a Section 30 back bond, and then also the general obligation bond. You know, this was a measure that was initially passed, the general obligation bond, was initially passed in the 29th Guam Legislature, and because of circumstances that required that, or that allowed it, or however we want to view it, that required that it not be entertained until very recently in the bond market, certainly, I think we need to recognize that the efforts on the part of the government representatives and as well as the underwriters to be able to bring these two particular issues to market and access the $473 million for the people of Guam to address some of the concerns, I think, is to be fairly noted. That is not, that statement of recognition certainly does not dismiss the cost to the people of Guam, and that, I think, we had discussed extensively during the deliberation of Public Law 30-1 and 30-7. But to note that the provisions in 30-1 and 30-7 allowed for the interest rate to max out for one particular bond at 8%, another one at 10%, well, it's good to note that the sale of the Guam bonds, the two simultaneous Guam bonds, the interest rates were quite, were much lower than that cap that was set by this legislative body. So that, I think, in and of itself, has translated into a potential reduction in costs. I don't want to say savings, but reduction in the cost of this particular borrowing mechanism. So with that in mind, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to request and urge our colleagues to strongly consider supporting this particular legislation. I understand that it's time-sensitive. The information or the documents have to be finalized and presented to the investors seven days subsequent to the sale of the bonds, and that's where our action here and the sense of urgency comes into play in terms of hopefully passing this legislation and allowing the bond underwriters as well as GIDEA representatives to proceed with the provision of the statements and the actual documents that are necessary for the bond investors. So on that note, Mr. Speaker, I certainly ask you and our colleagues to consider this. Thank you very much, Mrs. Massey.
Thank you, Senator Augen. I have next to speak Senator Panglinen. Are there any other members who wish to speak on the bill?
Mrs. Massey, Mr. Speaker, this really is something that I can, without any reservation, support, and it basically is a result of the delay in the issuance of the bonds from when the authorization was first passed, and that was back in October or last year, I believe, and so it's just that we're issuing the bonds five months later than when originally, approximately five months later than when they were originally authorized, actually back in December of 2009. And so this only allows us to conform to the IRS regulations also, and the, of course, the statute that says the maturity shall be no more than 30 years, and because of the delay, it's going to be 30 years and five months. But what's five months of additional time when people have been waiting 13, 15 years for these payments? And of course, we don't want to risk any opportunity here for this hard-fought battle to finally reach the people that we've all fought for in this room. We all say that we stand up and we fight for our manamko and we honor them, and, you know, we want to meet our obligations through them, and so I do want to express my appreciation, of course, and congratulations to the governor and the financial team that the governor put together. In particular, of course, you know, we've had what I call the two ladies. I know Ray Gibson always calls them, calls on the Bond Brothers, but the two ladies, the Bond Sisters, who made this thing happen with the controls that they've put in place in managing the resources and the finances of our government are two people that we're both very familiar with, Ms. Lou Paris and, of course, Ms. Bertha Duñez. Lou Paris, as you know, Mr. Speaker, served with us in Governor Ricky Bernaldo's administration. As a matter of fact, Lou Paris was probably the first woman chief of staff on this island. Everybody always thinks of Lou Panglinen, who was chief of staff to Governor Ada, but Lou was chief of staff to Governor Bernaldo prior to Governor Ada coming into office. So she has that long history. And of course, Bertha Duñez was deputy director of Bureau of Budget and Management under, again, Ricky Bernaldo's administration, and they certainly have participated in this process, and their efforts in terms of Lou on the part of managing the cash and Bertha on the part of managing the authorizations for expenditures have allowed us to manage our government resources quite well that have reflected positively in the interest rate, you know? We're not amending the interest rates this time. It's going to stay at no more than 10, but of course, we all know what happened. None of us could predict what was going to happen, but we wanted to ensure that we could make it happen, and that's why that 10% was there. But all that aside, the bottom line is, the bonds have been sold, the cash will be transferred to the government of Guam by the 18th, the 19th, or the 20th of this month, and we will be able to honor our obligations, not only to the COLA retirees, people forgetting, but all the income tax recipients who are owed income tax refunds are now going to be able to have the, this government's going to be able to meet our obligations to them. And, you know, people kind of forget that, but that was also one of the driving forces behind this push to do this, because we really have been borrowing money from Guam taxpayers by not paying them their refunds when it's due. And so we've transferred our debt payments from the taxpayers of Guam to now the bondholders of Guam, and maybe the good part is, the bondholders are going to hold us to our feet, make sure we meet our debt service payments, while our Guam taxpayers are left to begging at the front office or asking one of the senators to intervene when they need their income tax refunds. Can you please call up Art? And Art, you call up Art and he says, "I don't have the money," or "I don't have the staff to process it," you know? But it always seems like we're always willing to do whatever it takes to make sure we pay our debt to the businesses in our community, to the bondholders, but when it comes to their taxpayers, when we owe our debt and we owe them the money, we just say, "Wait." We just tell them to wait, and they wait, and they wait, and they wait. But we are going to do all, but we always pay our bondholders, and we always pay our vendors and so forth, but when it comes to the people, we tell them to wait. Well, we're not going to wait, they're not going to wait anymore, and we're going to make sure that we don't put ourselves back into this hole. You know, as chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, we're going to put some systems in place and implement laws that are existing so that the income tax refunds will be paid in a timely manner going forward. I think that's very important, that we don't find ourselves, again, in this hole, and that's one of the commitments at least I'm making, and I'm asking my colleagues to support that commitment when we go and we act and enact the budget for the new fiscal year. And so, and we will depend on the governor's financial management team to implement the laws and the policies that we set forth in putting together the budget so that our people won't have to wait for 2008 refunds or 2009 refunds when the time comes. That there's no more excuse of, "I had to take the 2009 money for the refunds and pay 2006," because we will pay all of that, and we know that we're going to make our debt service payment, and we will, for what we've borrowed to pay the 2006 refunds that we've now refinanced on the bond market, and we don't owe our people anymore, and we will make sure that we honor those commitments. So once again, this is a technical amendment. It allows us to ensure that the cash gets transferred at the end of the month, on the 18th, right after the 18th on the closing, so that we're able to make these payments to, of course, the refunds and the COLA recipients, plus, of course, refinance a portion of our debt to the retirement fund for the Guam Memorial Hospital and the public school system, and then also have some additional money of $10 million for capital improvements at Guam Memorial Hospital. So I totally support this bill. It's a technical amendment, and that, the Bond Council's right, he should have caught this, but he didn't, and we have to fix it, and this is the fix that's needed. So I want to thank all of my colleagues who've supported the efforts that we've had collectively in this body to ensure that these bonds are sold, to ensure that the bonds for the deficit is sold at the same time as a landfill bond, even though we had everybody from the receiver telling us, "You don't do it, you can't do it," and we even had doubting Thomases in this room. But the end result is, we were able to get some favorable rates, and what is most important to me is that we're not going to be borrowing from our own people now by not paying them their refunds, and to me, that's a good thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. I noted that Senator Guthertz wishes to speak. Madam Majority Leader, you're recognized.
I want to thank our chairman, who is off island right now, Senator Rispecho. I want to thank my colleagues for coming in very quickly this afternoon to help resolve this technical matter. You know, we're so close to seeing what we all want to see, the actual completion of this bond process. We learned only this afternoon about this matter, and I think the governor acted quickly and called us into session. Our colleagues responded here, and Senator Frank Augen helped to arrange for the session with our acting speaker. I believe that, Mr. Speaker, one thing that shows from this action today is that none of us are perfect. Even the Bond Council makes mistakes. And true, he should have caught it earlier when they were drafting the documents in the mainland, but we forgive him and forgive those who should have caught it on that side of the globe, and we're going to correct it on our end to make sure that the end result is realized. I also want to make one clarification, because I've been asked by many people out in the community, wherever I go, "So Judy, how big is the check you're going to get for the COLA?" And I just want to say for the record, I will not be getting one cent from the COLA settlement. I'm not eligible, I'm not a participant in that settlement, and I think it's important to say that because people out there misunderstand. No benefit at all, other than the benefit of seeing those that are deserving of it, who should have gotten it 15 years ago, finally get it, and I'm very, very happy for them. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Senator Augen, you're recognized. Unless there's another member, does any other member wish to speak? Not seeing any, Senator Augen, do you wish to close?
Actually, I thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I think everything has been said. Because there has been no amendment made to the legislation, there's no need to move for, or can I motion also, Mr. Speaker, because this is moving to the third reading for consideration that the body... because this is moving to the third reading for consideration that the body votes without engrossment? I don't know if that's necessary, but because there's no amendment, then...
There being no objection, we can vote on engrossment, but I need a motion to put it in the voting file. All right, we're in voting file. Madam Clerk, if you would call the bill.
Bill Number 1-3-S introduced by the Committee on Rules and Natural Resources, Federal Foreign and Monetary Affairs by request of Imagalahin, Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act to amend Section 1512.1B of Article 5 of Chapter 1 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated relative to the issuance of bonds to finance certain general fund expenses.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Augen. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Espaldan. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rector. Senator Rispositio. Senator Titegwee. Senator Tenorio. Senator Wampat.
There are nine ye votes, six absences. Bill 1-3-S has sufficient votes for passage by the 30th Guam Legislature, though 1-3-S is passed by the 30th Guam Legislature. I thank my colleagues. Is there a motion, Madam Majority Leader?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn this special session. Sinidei.
Any objection? There being no objection, so ordered. Follow-up motion, Madam Speaker, I mean, Madam Majority Leader.
Follow-up motion, Mr. Speaker, is that we will convene at the call of the speaker. I move to adjourn.
There being no objection, so ordered. I thank my colleagues for their prompt response. We stand adjourned.